Thank you.
Very good. Thank you that we've got our technical issues under control for the moment. Welcome everyone. It's Monday, September twenty fifth, twenty twenty-three. It's time for our regularly scheduled city council meeting. Like the current certified meeting notice, please.
This meeting has been noticed in accordance with Idaho Code seven four dash two zero four.
Record call roll.
Councilmember Heller.
Present.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Here.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Stand to join me for the pledge. Next item on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Council. I would like to, given the audience we have here. If you'd entertain moving special business up ahead of the consent agenda this evening, so we can get B back to her dinner table and take advantage of Mr. Gigray and our guests here tonight to do the NAFK presentation.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we restructure the order of tonight's agenda, moving item F, special business, to item E.
Second. And a motion is second. Discussion on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. So now we will go to the item formerly known as F one, Domestic Violence Awareness Month Proclamation. Whereas personal relationships are destroyed through acts of domestic violence where one member gains control and power over another through physical, emotional, sexual, economic, or psychological actions or threats. And whereas it is important to make people aware that an estimated one in four women and one in seven men will experience domestic abuse in their lifetime. And whereas victims of domestic violence and their children need the help of strong community partners who can offer help, support, advice, and guidance in times of need. And whereas a range of services and programs exist throughout the Treasure Valley, providing safety, healing, and freedom for domestic from domestic abuse and sexual assault, including secure shelters, court advocacy, counseling, childcare, as well as case management. And whereas wearing purple during the month of October can be used as a way to tell others why ending domestic violence is important to you. Now therefore I, John G Evans, Mayor of the City of Garden City, Idaho, do hereby proclaim October to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month and encourage all citizens to speak out against domestic violence and support local efforts to provide help and healing to victims of these crimes. Dated this twenty-fifth day of September, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. May I just thank all of you from the bottom of my heart for doing this year after year and helping this world. Right, we have our D-Down press conference and it has just grown in terms of leaders coming together. And I think it just makes an awesome statement. So this is the first one. Thank you. And we're just delighted. So thank you for the honor and the privilege.
Thank you, Pink.
My pleasure.
Thank you, B.
I'll see you Friday.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda would be the NAFK Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee Study Presentation. Welcome.
Thanks.
Yes, yes. The color, yeah. Yeah, when we PDF did it, went a little wonky on you. So you'll probably just have to scroll through.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay.
If you would, give us your name and address for the record.
Yeah, yeah, Mayor, City Council, I'm Colin McCooney with Tischler, Bies, Galena. Office is nine 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 West Main Street, Boise, Idaho. Here to present the findings of our North Ada County Fire and Rescue Impact Fee Study, or NACFER. Just a little bit background about the firm.
Oh, sorry. Need a share screen.
I've gotten pretty good at this. So I guess it's kind of a two-part presentation. So I'm going to go through the actual results of the impact fee study. And then Bill here will sort of go through some recommended procedural changes that he is going to present to council and work through. But a little bit more about the firm, our bread and butter, our exciting world of impact fees and and infrastructure financing for municipal cities and counties. You're getting a little flavor here of our experience, but also the prevalence of impact fees throughout the state, up through the Panhandle. Pretty much every fire district in the Treasure Valley has impact fees to help finance their capital. And then all the way out east to the Tetons, there's, there's impact fees there. Just a little bit of, you know, impact fee fundamentals. These are one-time payments that new growth pays to offset their new demand on certain infrastructure. In this case, it's fire stations, fire apparatus, and fire equipment. These dollars cannot be used for replacement of existing infrastructure, cannot be used for personnel, cannot be used for maintenance. It's really that one-time fee for their one-time impact on that new infrastructure. So typically, these are new homes, like subdivisions, new commercial development. This is not on remodeling of a home, or if you're a business that moves into an existing structure. It's really on the new construction, bringing in new folks and new jobs into the, into the community. Importantly, there's enabling legislation that we have to sort of stay within the parameters and and that necessitates what's called a nexus study. And so we have to show three things there, a need, a benefit, and proportionality. So first, the need, that's sitting down with, in this case, the fire district or different department heads to understand what capital needs they have that are growth-related. So if we're going to grow, are we actually going to put in the ground or increase our fleet to accommodate that growth, to keep up with levels of service? Importantly, we have to show benefit, and that is done really also on the administration side. So within Idaho, we have to spend these dollars within eight years. So we can't just stockpile cash. We can't just assess this fee and not use these dollars. We have to show a capital improvement plan, and we have to be using these dollars in a timely fashion. If not, those dollars get returned back to the property owner. And lastly, these fees are proportionate. And so we're only looking at those growth-related costs. But you're going to see different development types in the fee schedule. Because single-family development has a different demand than office, which has a different demand than retail. So keeping the fee itself proportionate. Touched on this, but you know, we're really honing in on those new, those costs for new facilities, improvements. We can do these also for, let's say, park expansion. And so if you were improving a park, you could use impact fees for that. If you oversized a facility, let's say a wastewater treatment site that might have a forty-year planning horizon, growth can pay its fair share into that, that forty years of capacity. But again, we can't use this for maintenance or repairs, can't be use it, using these dollars for operating costs. And it can't be used to correct deficient, existing deficiencies. So if a fire station, their HVAC went out or you know, the garage needed repairs, that exists today, that's not a growth-related cost. That's a cost bait from new development, or sorry, from existing development that we can't use impact fee dollars for. Specifically in Idaho, these dollars are kept in a special revenue fund, separate from the general fund. We have to use these dollars within eight years. There is language that says eleven years in extraordinary, extraordinary circumstances, but really want to see our communities using these dollars in a timely fashion. If, if we were to come into a district or a city and they say, hey, we're interested in impact fees, but we might only have one capital project in year ten. Well, maybe not impact fees are the best thing for that community because you're not, you're obligated to provide that new infrastructure. If we're not using it in a timely fashion, well, maybe it's not the right solution. We have to have advisory committees. And so you appointed a committee that we sat down. We also are collecting in Ada County, in the unincorporated areas. So they also have a DFAC, a Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee, which is made up of five, at least five residents, two of which have to be in the development community. And they review these studies and also meet once a year for some oversight of the collection of the dollars, but also the expenditures of those dollars. These fees have to be updated, the, the study itself, every five years. We need to have a capital improvement plan. And then we're only looking at capital that has a ten-year useful life or longer. So obviously, fire engines and fire stations have that lifespan. And there, there's also some fire equipment that we can include in, in these fee studies. We also evaluated handful of things, including credits. So if there's any other dedicated revenues coming in to, that's going towards new capital, new infrastructure, we reduce the impact fee to make sure we're not double collecting on growth. And then also on the administration side of these programs, if a, you know, big development, big community were to dedicate infrastructure, you know, in this case, let's say a fire engine, they would get a credit off of their impact fee bill essentially, because they're mitigating their new impact with that dedication. Lastly, just an overview of, of the process. Again, we've sort of sat down with the district staff to understand capital needs, actually worked with your planning staff and Ada County staff to understand growth in the area, went through those different methodologies, different credits, calculated those fees, put together a nice report, and then reviewed that with advisory committees, got recommendation by both advisory committees. And then those go to, in this case, the city and county, because you will be collecting on behalf, and you have been collecting on behalf of the fire district. And then those dollars are remitted to the fire district to help fund their, their CIP. So a little bit more, NACFER, obviously serving Garden City, but they serve up into the foothills as well, in the unincorporated parts of Ada County. We again look at growth projections to ensure, hey, you know, we're growing at a, at least, you know, substantial amount that necessitates new capital. We've done that by evaluating building trends, especially here in Garden City. You have a lot of multifamily development occurring. So we've looked at that pipeline to start understanding, okay, are we seeing single-family, multifamily? At what, what degree are we doing that? And so you're seeing the average throughout the district for single-family and multifamily growth in this figure here. So that's about two hundred homes on average. And then the second figure shows the pipeline within the city of Garden City. Two hundred eighty-two, single-family homes have been approved but yet built or entitled, and eleven hundred multifamily units have been approved but yet built or entitled as well. So really nice sort of substantial, healthy market moving forward, even if we're seeing a little bit of a dip throughout the Treasure Valley when it comes to construction. We're seeing this sort of still uptick, coming back to, you know, levels that we saw maybe right before twenty twenty. So overall, you're seeing here our residential projections for the overall district. So Garden City is included in this, but also the, the foothills as well. So right now we have about twenty-one thousand residents. That's going to grow by about two percent every year, or twenty percent over the next ten years to get forty-two hundred new residents. And that's about twenty-two hundred new housing units within the district. On the commercial side, we looked at compass projections to help understand a little bit of, of commercial development. So they're projecting about twelve percent increase, or about ten thousand jobs, most of that being in Garden City. And then that's going to grow to eleven thousand jobs over the next ten years. Nice mix between retail, some industrial development, and then also a little bit institutional and office growth as well. So we've taken what's called a plan-based approach in this study, and it in easy terms, we look at the ten-year capital needs, and we compare that to the ten-year growth projections. And then together, we were able to calculate the impact fee for that future level of service. So we're looking at the future needs in the CIP for new stations, new apparatus, those eligible equipments, and then also the impact fee study itself, the cost to do this work can be collected in the impact fee itself, because that's another growth-related cost that's attributed and can be collected on. So here is NACFER's ten-year capital plan. So we have an expansion at the Hidden Springs Station. That's five hundred and sixty square feet, or eight hundred thousand dollars. There's a new engine planned for Station eighteen on Shindon. You can see the costs there, which have really escalated the last three years for, for fire, for really every, every service provider. But you're seeing new fire engines being about a million bucks now. We can collect for radios and CSBAs smaller amounts, but that really helps alleviate some of that growth-related pressure on the general fund. And then the studies, we have to do those two in the next ten years, every five years. So you're seeing costs there. So overall, the next ten years, the growth-related portion of, for, for NACFER's two million dollars.
What is SCBA?
The, the breathing tanks. Yeah, yeah. So importantly, we look at residential and non-residential growth and to attribute that CIP and that total cost to those different demand factors, we've calculated with calls for service information from the dispatch to attribute overall eighty-one percent of that demand coming from residential locations and nineteen percent coming from non-residential locations. And then we get into those level of service and, and, and cost calculations. Very sort of straightforward. We, we have that ten-year need in stations, so that's eight hundred thousand dollars. Split that out, the eighty-one and nineteen percent proportionate share, comparing that to the ten-year growth that we project. So that's four thousand new residents or forty-two hundred new vehicle trips. So in the first green line, that's sort of the level of service that they're going to provide. Then we compare that to the average cost per square foot, which in this case is fourteen hundred dollars per square foot. And importantly, I noted, but didn't, didn't mention here, a lot of that cost is horizontal improvement or just sort of site prep that they need up there to help do the actual construction of the expansion. So ultimately, there's a hundred and six square feet per thousand residents. Multiply that by the cost factor, you get a hundred and fifty hundred dollars per person. And that's for the station component. Same math for the engine. We're working with that million bucks for that new engine. Portion that out with the call data, you get the first green line being the level of service. Then we compare that to the cost. So that's about two hundred bucks per person. Again, smaller numbers, but we can collect for those new equipment needed to help outfit the stations and expanded personnel. So you're seeing levels of service, ultimately getting about six top sixteen dollars per person. Lastly, we have the study. So we do these every five years. So we attribute that about twenty thousand dollars for the, for the work here to the five-year growth projections. So that's seven bucks a person or two dollars per vehicle trip. And importantly, we bring that all together here, and we have the sort of totals or gross amount of three hundred and seventy-four dollars per person. And then those are multiplied by those persons for housing unit factors, these man factors for vehicle trip rates for retail office, in, in industrial and institutional. So you're seeing in the first, or sort of in the middle green there, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars is the maximum support fee amount, which has been approved by Garden City DFAC. We get that by the three hundred and seventy-four dollars per person, multiplied by that, by the two point three five persons per household. Right now, we're collecting six hundred and fifty dollars per unit. But that's sort of a unit, that is a unified fee for single-family versus multifamily. And we're recommending that we at least split this out between those two, two housing types. And so the fee for multifamily, because they have less folks in there, is five hundred and ninety-one dollars. And that's per unit. And so if you were to do a ten-unit apartment building, you pay this fee ten times. So overall, that's about two hundred dollar increase for single-family homes, actually fifty buck decrease for the multifamily units. On the non-residential side, you're seeing some increases for retail office and institutional, and then industrial. They have smaller demand factors on that sort of thousand-foot level. And so you're seeing that being a decrease. And these fees here, like retail, twelve hundred dollars is per thousand square feet of development. We compare those maximum fee amounts to the projected growth. And, you know, if we've done our work properly, revenues are able to offset the expenditures, and that's what we see here. We don't get a nice round zero, but you know, there's rounding involved in the math. So basically showing that these revenues over the next ten years can fully fund the growth-related portion of the CIP. And then lastly, I guess we may have two more slides. Here's a comparison of all the other neighboring jurisdictions and their fire fees. We can see right now, NACFER, sort of at the bottom, at six hundred and fifty dollars for a single family. This eight eighty brings us right to the middle. Lot of asterisks here because we're updating, updating a lot of these studies, including Eagle and Star. Those are new fees, going through the adoption process right now. Really healthy capital improvements there to address all the growth happening in the northern part of this county. And so that's getting to about twenty hun, twenty-one hundred dollars for a single-family home. And then lastly, when we were working through with the DFAC, there were concerns about what would this higher fee do? Would it, would it hamper or desensitize growth within specifically Garden City? And so I sort of brought together three examples of commercial development in the last couple of years. You have split rail. There is a office building that was constructed in a new industrial shop. So you're seeing in the sort of middle there, the, the improvement tax value. So it's not really the construction value, but at least what Ada County valued those improvements at. Their square footage is. So in that sort of middle column, you're seeing what the fee would be at the, under the current schedule. Then when with the updated schedule, what that fee would be, and then the change in the impact. So we have about, you know, seven hun, seven thousand dollars more for the split rail, thirty-five hundred dollars more for the office, and actually decreases for the shop. And then comparing that to the tax value to just to sort of try and bring it into terms like new construction. And this would be less than one percent of, of that tax value, in some cases, point one percent, or, or even a decrease. So that is all I have. I guess we have Bill here to go sort of more into procedure side. So I wanted to open up for discussion if there was anything on the sort of calculation of the fee.
I, I had one, one question. Is a fee eligible for increasing capability?
Yeah, could you expand on that? Yeah, sorry.
Well, buying a piece of equipment that would allow you to tear a car apart quicker on an accident.
Yeah, that's a great question. And so we, there's a little, you know, gray area. I know sometimes attorneys don't think this, but you know, there's, there's a nice, you can sort, you can try and make an argument for a lot of things, but especially when it comes to technology. And let's say you were, you know, replacing an existing fleet item, an existing unit, a rescue unit. You know, it's just sort of, it's run its course, and you have to, you know, replace it. But if you replace it with something that can expand the capacity, you know, maybe better serve folks, you could make an argument that, that portion, it'd be a smaller portion, but that portion could be impact fee eligible because you're expanding the capacity. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, certainly.
Can I ask a couple of questions? Interesting. So what percentage of the, of the fire district's budget is impact fees versus other sources?
Well, all of their, their hope is that the full capital, the growth-related portion of their CIP would be fully funded by impact fees.
And then another question is, because I've heard this criticism of ACHDs, are the dollars, my guess is, my understanding is from your presentation, you collect impact fees from your, your service area. But you could collect impact fees in Garden City per se, and that could be used towards the spending of new facilities in another part of the district? Or are they like Garden City dollars or kept in Garden City? How is, how is that work? It's just going to pot and we use it?
Great question. Yeah. So right now it goes into one singular pot, district for, for NACFER district. The great thing, going back to the CIP, is the improvements are District Y, where we're seeing expansion, you know, benefit up in the Hidden Springs area, but then also that new engine down on Shindon, you know, so providing that equal benefit there. There's
So it's just goes into one pot, you use it where you need it. It's not, because that was a criticism, like, you know, hey, we're spending ACHD impact fees that's going to Q to do it for refill. Okay. And then, which is fine. And then the other question is, you mentioned it's a, it's a five-year study. So does that mean kind of the impact fees get adjusted every five years? Or do you look at it kind of manually to adjust? Then.
Great question. So you do have the ability, under my interpretation, and there, there NAPA is doing this, and, and some, a couple of other communities are doing it, where you can, especially as long as it's not more than five percent, you can, in the ordinance, have an inflationary factor that is addressed every year, based on construction costs of, you know, station, you know, fire stations and those. Yeah, exactly. But importantly, these do have to be updated at least every five, and not just that inflationary factor, but of, like, comprehensive study. Yeah, yeah. Because, you know, it's not the case right now, but you know, in some communities, you reach full buildout and you're, you know, maybe you don't have too much new capital need. And, you know, in those cases, we haven't seen it yet in the state, but we'll, we'll get to that point, you know, maybe after I retire. But, but there'll be some communities that, hey, you know, we don't need new parks, right? We're sort of built out, you know, we're, we're, we're not growing that way anymore. We're just looking at replacement and, and maybe we don't collect impact fees at that.
So the impact fees are by area, but they go into a master pot.
And the master pot for the fire district.
Fire, yeah, for the fire.
Yeah.
Great. Further questions? Great, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Mr. Gigray?
Mayor, members of the council, for purpose of the record, my name is William Franklin Gigray III. I'm with the firm of White, Peterson, Gigray, and Nichols at fifty-seven hundred East Franklin Road in Nampa, Idaho. We are, I'm here appearing on behalf as attorney for the North Ada County Fire and Rescue District. I want to thank the mayor and the council for this opportunity to make this presentation. I want to thank Colin for the very fine presentation he did on new capital improvement plan, and also thank Charles Wadams for all of his courtesies in helping us get organized to make this appearance here today. Now, I'm going to try something. I may have to call emergency services because screen share scares me to death. But let me see if I can do it. Has it appeared?
It's appeared. You may have to read it to us. It's really small.
Well, of course, lawyers, our job is to put it in small print, so you can't just a joke. And if it's an annoyance, I'll, I'll take it off.
I don't think it really adds any value. Maybe you could address it in a narrative somehow for us.
No, I can do that.
Okay, perfect.
We're back then. I got to figure out how to make these so they're big enough. What I'm talking about here is the procedures that I anticipate that we, and we're going to recommend on behalf of the district, that the city follows. And this meeting today with the city council is really more of an introduction and, and advice to the board of the council about what we anticipate we will be requesting. First, of course, is the new capital improvement plan, which Colin talked about and made his presentation on. The other are involved the statutory changes that affect the advisory committee. As Idaho Legislature, this last session this year amended sixty-seven eighty-two oh five that changed the residency requirements for the that changed the residency requirements for the advisory committee so that those residency requirements now require that they must reside within the service area of the subject capital improvement plan of the district, of course, of which the impact fees are um imposed. And uh also that the nomination process for the impact fee committee members uh is governed under the uh intergovernmental agreement, which are changes from what uh the preceding um years required that they were residents within the district, within the county or within the city that was imposing the impact fee. Um, and um, so we'll talk about what requested changes we want or looking at in that regard. Uh, so therefore, in order to accomplish all of this, we're gonna need to have amendments in the city's comprehensive plan and amendments to the city's um development impact fee ordinance and also amended and reformed intergovernmental agreement. So in order to accomplish all those steps, the first step will be uh to amend the comprehensive plan. Because as you know, under the Local Land Use Planning Act, which governs that process, this has to start with the Planning and Zoning Commission, which has to notice and have a public hearing. Uh, and that public hearing will be for the purpose of amending your comprehensive plan and so that the new um capital improvement plan, development impact fee study for North Ada County Fire and Rescue dated May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, then becomes referenced in your comprehensive plan rather than the one that's referenced now well, two thousand and eighteen, which will be hopefully by then out of date. Uh, that, of course, will be followed by the conduct of the of that hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then they have to do their findings, conclusions of law and recommendation to the city council. Or uh hopefully from our perspective, uh, that recommend that you do amend your comprehensive plan to include the new C I P. Um, the um process does not move until that recommendation is received by the city council. Um, and uh at that point, um, what we will recommend, and this would follow a process similar to what I think we followed before and I've done in other jurisdictions, which I recommend. And that is that we would have uh a meeting of the city council as well as the Board of Commissioners of the Fire District. So that all of the necessary steps in order to complete this whole process could be conducted at that one meeting. And then both the city council as well as the Fire District Commission knows that all of those steps have been completed. And if any have not been completed, at least everybody knows where everybody is on this process. So that meeting will include, of course, some public hearings. And there will be notices of public hearings, which will be conducted by both the city council and the Fire District Board of Commissioners, which would be the approval of the new capital improvement plan as well as the notice of increased fee. Not that that is referenced, I believe in Colin's presentation, there's one fee that's probably reduced from the current fees. But overall, there are increases which would in which would uh are greater than five percent. So we, my recommendation will be just to have a hearing on all of them. Um, and that both that hearing would be conducted both for the city council as well as by the Fire District, because I don't want to have somebody coming in challenging the impact fees later saying, well, yeah, it's a city ordinance for impact fees, but the Fire District, it's really Fire District impact fees and they didn't conduct a hearing. Well, I don't think that should carry the day, but it might in court and why argue about it? So why not just have both the commission as well as your council uh conduct those those hearings? The other two hearings would involve only the city council. And those hearings, of course, would be the um cap- the uh amendment of your comprehensive plan and the ordinances, which would be uh under consideration, which of course would uh involve the impact fee ordinance of North Ada County Fire and Rescue, which would be your jurisdiction alone. Uh, then uh at that city council meeting, after the conduct of the um necessary public hearings, we'd be looking at the necessary resolutions to approve the um uh, the uh, the comprehensive plan amendments as well as the ordinances. And the ordinance proposals that we'd be looking at and be requesting your consideration um, would be uh centered on the advisory committee. And it would basically involve two sections of your code, uh eleven one three C, which was the impact fee schedule. The Idaho code requires, the development impact fee law requires that the impact fee schedule be in the ordinance, which yours has. But we'll need to change it if you approve the new capital improvement plan. So that provision of the or requires an ordinance. The other are the advisory committee membership residency requirements and appointment process. So that that section is changed to make it clear that the residency requirements is to reside within the service area of the capital improvement plan. Is and that the process of nomination would be governed by the intergovernmental agreement. The uh additional actions uh at that council, uh, of course, would be um the issue of the intergovernmental agreement first amended amended and reformed. And I mention that because I I don't like admit, when the old days, we used to do amendments to agreements and there would be you'd have an agreement in the file, then you'd have to hunt up the amendment and the other amendment. And so I think if we just keep amending and reforming as time goes on, it's all the amendments are housed in one agreement. So you only have to look at the one, not each uh each amendment. Uh, in this instance, one of the logistics that uh the North Ada County Fire and Rescue District is occurring as well as the other districts that I represent is that when they are involved with multiple jurisdictions for impact fees, even though the impact fees are based on the same capital improvement plan, which has as a service area, all the area within the boundaries of the district, they are required, and the law is still the same there, to present um the um to the advisory committee of the jurisdictions that they're in that have impact fees for North Ada County, of course, that's Ada County as well as the city of Garden City. So there are two committees that have to be performed and have to meet and have to review all the material. And then they have to make a recommendation to the agency which they are formed. One of the advantages of the change in the dev- uh the advisory committee uh law of the development impact fee statutes of the state is that it could allow for the district to appoint the same members of both committees. So that as they staff those committee meetings, which are under the open meeting law and we have to follow all the bells and bells and whistles of the open meeting law. Uh, one presentation can be made by um like Colin uh and Tischler Beis the same people serving in two um capacities. And then uh review and make a recommendation, which is gonna be the same to the city of Garden City as well as to Ada County. And I've got some jurisdictions like Star and Kuna that have more than two that they have to deal with. And um Colin and his folks do a great job, but it is, and it it's their time to make these appearances at each of the different meetings of these committees, uh, which is an expense to the district. And so we see some synergy and some uh administrative cost savings by being allowed to have and proceed with the nomination process with notice, of course, to the county commissioners and to the city council. Uh, the members on that committee, which also will speed the process of nomination and vacancy replacement and whatever, as well as allowing them to have the development of uh the review, which is supposed to be annual of the capital improvement plan. And of course, it has to be uh re- uh considered for revision every five years um at one meeting. So um, those are the steps in the process that uh we are hoping will be followed uh in order to uh deal with these two issues uh of the uh new capital improvement plan as well as the changes in the law in the advisory committee uh and the process involved. So at this point, um, I stand for any questions that the mayor or council may have?
Uh, Mr. Giggrey, I I'm presuming that what you've just shared with us, you can send to Mr. Waddams in a form that we can
Oh, certainly.
Yeah, uh, I think that's probably our best course of action, uh, so we can get that in front of us and and uh and pick up the points. I like the consolidating some of these meetings idea uh and streamlining whatever we can streamline there. But um, uh, my recommendation is, uh, once we get that, uh, perhaps uh, the council can further discuss it at a work session or or during a council meeting, uh, after uh, Mr. Waddams has a chance to to review it and and get any questions he might have answered from you, Mr. Giggrey. Does that work?
Mr. Mayor, that works. And what we will do is actually I will send him drafts of all the documents involved.
Okay.
It'll show a step by step process uh associated with all of that. And um, so yes, we're more than happy to do that, and that's what we intend to do.
Very good. Thank you. I think that'll be uh the the best way forward, counsel. Anybody disagree with that? Okay, great. Well, thank you very much.
Are are we dismissed?
Yeah, yes. You're welcome to stay and listen to the rest of the meeting, however, but uh, yes, yes.
I did have a question regarding the timeline.
Okay.
Do do we know when this would become back? Or is there, is I presume that there's some critical timelines or dates that need to be cleared?
I I I don't know the answer to that question, other than the timeline is the question, Mr. Giggrey. Uh, I'm assuming that uh from our end, once we get the information, you're gonna send Mr. Waddams. Uh, uh, once he gets any questions he has answered, uh, and is able to bring it back to us, we can do it at that time. Uh, so uh, we have five meetings left this year. So is there some s- some deadline you're shooting for to get to get some of these structural changes made? You identified?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, obviously from a statutory standpoint, since we have impact fees in place, um, there we don't have one other than obviously the capital improvement plan uh, which sort of vice has helped us with should be in place at some point because it's supposed to be reviewed by the council every five years. And I think we're coming up close to the five year on the one that's there. And I'll defer to Shelley Vaughn, who is the district secretary and keeps both Colin and I in line. Uh, if she would want to add to uh to your question.
Yeah, I think. Uh, Shelley, just as fast as we can go. Does that work? Okay. Sure. Well, we'll we'll shoot for, we'll shoot for year end and uh uh, I think uh we'll just see what we can work in. So we'll look forward to getting the information from Mr. Giggrey and uh uh, we'll go from there. Thank you very much for the presentation. Well done. The answer to a question of mine, sort of. And uh, and that that's the way that works sometimes. It was kind of a trick question. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So anyway, but uh, but thank you so much. There's nothing else, counsel. We'll move on.
Thank you.
Very much. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Yeah, pleasure to have you. Uh, good evening. Uh, next item, uh, under the general special business that we moved is monthly staff reports. Counsel, are there questions, specific questions regarding the staff reports?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I did have um specific questions regarding the I I just would like to get some clarity about the de-annexing that Ada County is looking for regarding the fairgrounds property.
We're, we got two pieces to answer that question. There's two pieces. Uh, Hannah, help me if I get this bowed up. Uh, Allworth bisects a piece of property that they'd like to de-annex. So there's a piece on the, what I call the fairground side, which is the riverside of that. And then there's a vacant lot that's how many acres? Three or four acres? Maybe? See, anyway, uh, that's that's uh on the Chenden side of the uh, Allworth. So clearly, the area on the riverside of Allworth, in my opinion, uh, there's no reason for that to remain in the Garden City city limits. Uh, we know it's gonna be park, part of the park improvements. Uh, the area on the Chenden side of Allworth, it's the county has. I'm about to sneeze, so if I stop, I'll I'll stop. Um, uh, there isn't, uh, unless something's changed recently, there isn't a specific plan um, for that piece of property. Sorry for the drama here. I just don't know. Don't want to get surprised. Yeah. So my discussion with our staff is uh we can always deal with the de-annexation if there's something that occurs and we know what's gonna happen on that piece of property on the Chenden side of Allworth. Uh, so maybe we could start with uh recommend recommending to the council that we go ahead and participate in de-annexing the portion on the riverside of Allworth because uh there there's no value to the city. Understanding that we have to preserve our access to a monitoring station that we have uh in that location. Um, and so anything we do, we would have to uh retain uh, an access uh that's suitable to to uh Colin, our Colin. Yeah, Colin Schmidt and uh and that can, it it can be done a number of ways. So that's kind of, kind of where that is. Uh, we haven't brought anything, obviously, forward to you yet. We're in a discussion stage with staff. Is that basically right, Hannah? Okay, okay.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
You betcha. Any other questions? Great. Um, let's move back to the consent agenda. So uh, it's a pleasure of the council on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I move to amend the consent agenda by removing item number three.
Okay. Hey, you had a motion to uh uh, remove item three from the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I would second.
Okay, I've got a motion and second. Any discussion? Very none. I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We're amended now the matter before.
Mayor, just at this point of where, so was it part of the motion to move move that item into the regular agenda?
That's my presumption.
Uh, is the um
We'd move it into the regular agenda for discussion and deal with it separate.
Great, let's do that.
Okay, okay. So we'll move that uh Well, basically
Move that to item uh G and then push everything else down.
Okay. Let Lisa get caught up with this here. Hey. Let's move now. We've removed item three from the consent agenda. Do I have an action on the rest of the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve the amended consent agenda.
Second. Got a motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Great. Motion carries. Now we will move down to item G and discuss DSR FY 2023-0007. Before we start, I've asked Anna Veal to bring us up to speed on on, on the up to the minute, so to speak.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. And design review fiscal year 2023-0007 was recommended for approval by the design review consultants on September 18th with conditions as drafted in the drafted decision document. Additional conditions were created in that decision document to reflect the discussions had during the September 18th design review consultation. And those conditions were essentially to reflect the need for additional review of the bike and pedestrian pathway, as well as that off-site trash enclosure. The applicant was provided a signed approval document with those conditions in the decision and they received it today. But it was signed and backdated to September 18th, which was the discussion meeting date. And I would like to remind the council that the design review consultation process is a staff-level administrative process with staff being the final decision maker, unless that decision is otherwise appealed by either the applicant or any of those from the public who have standing. We often will see that the consultants provide comments such as Derek Hertz for this particular application to help prompt discussions during that consultation meeting, which was held on September 18th. Those comments, however, are not official decisions or recommendations, rather discussion points in which can help, like I said, prompt the discussion. Those comments can, however, create conditions that are made in the decision document, which is what we saw for this Bardane application. All design review applications will be put on the city council consent agenda to allow for the council to discuss all design review applications that the city sees and can be pulled off of that consent agenda if discussion is necessary. However, with that being said, the approval or formal approval of the Bardane Design Review Fiscal Year 2023-0007 was formalized on September 18th.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I add on that just?
Sure.
Okay. So just so the, the mayor and the council are tracking then, so we have staff made a decision. It's on the consent agenda, or it was on the consent agenda, just moved to the regular agenda. So the council, if the council wants to take a look at it, then that would take a motion that would be set for a future date, and that would be a non-denovo hearing if the council would like to take a second look at this application. So procedurally, that would happen tonight. It would take a motion in a second for a future date certain.
So the staff's made the final decision. Does the council qualify as an appellate party?
The Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there's a carve-out for the council. It's basically an appeal. We don't call it an appeal, but it's basically an appeal. And this is where the council basically said, we want to take a second look at it. So it's like an appeal, similar to an appeal, but not exactly like.
Okay. Questions of Ms. Veal?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Veal, thank you for your time today. So are you able to confirm if there is in fact a cross-park agreement?
There is not a cross-parking agreement set in place. It was not a condition as drafted in the decision document because the application did find to meet the new parking ordinance that actually exceeded the parking requirements. Therefore, there was no discussion had on Monday, last Monday, and there was no condition drafted for it.
Thank you.
Okay, further questions?
Ms. Veal, can you help me understand? How is this all hanging together? Is Bardane's development independent of Riverside? Or what's the relationship between Riverside and Bardane?
Yeah. So the relationship is that the Riverside property owners own this parcel in which Bardane is leasing and constructing upon.
So Riverside owns the building, basically? They're a landlord?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Veal, I'm still having a difficult time understanding how parking would be accommodated, particularly, you know, we've all been to the Riverside. Their parking lot is fairly jammed, particularly on the weekends when people are accessing to lay in other minor reasons. I, I'm, I'm struggling to understand how how the parking can be accommodated by bringing in a new establishment that will certainly draw a lot more, I hope, for the benefit of the business owner, a lot more traffic, both pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicles. I, I'm really struggling with that.
Mr. Mayor and council members, and staff was reviewing the project based off of two different uses. The first being that eating establishment, full services, and then the other portion being a warehouse. The warehouse takes up a significant portion of the structure. And with the way the new parking ordinance is written, we evaluate the use based off the square footage, which then determines how many parking spaces are required of the site. I don't have it memorized, but I do have the staff report in front of me, and I believe there were only 12 parking vehicular parking spaces required of the entire site based off of the code ordinance. And so in that, it meets the minimal standards set forth in code. There was no, no further discussion had.
Okay.
So, so.
Go ahead.
So Hannah, if I understand, just for clarification, so it's split in two uses. One's eating, restaurant, so that's X number of square feet, which, which equals this many spaces. Warehouse is this many square feet. Equals that number of spaces total of 12.
Correct. And, and I can reference it directly if you.
No, it makes sense. I just wanted to make sure in my mind and how that path.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Or Ms. Veal, I'm trying to find, I, I know I saw it. How many tables or whatnot? There was a metric in here on the expected, I believe, ability to serve X amount of individuals or X amount of tables. Does anybody have that?
I'm looking for that now. Thank you.
But our, but our code ties the parking to the square footage of the restaurant.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
It, it does, it doesn't mention seats?
No, it does not mention seats or occupancy. It's specific to the square.
So you reviewed this in compliance with our code?
Correct.
And that's how you came to your decision?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I believe though in the code, there is, there is language for specific use, correct?
Yes, and that's.
I think that if, if we're kind of buffering this based on a split, I, I, I think we need to reconsider that. I, I just I, I just cannot wrap my mind around as busy as Bardane is in the other locations, stuffing this next to the Riverside and saying it only needs 12 parking spaces.
I understand, I understand your point. I've, I we have to have a basis if you want to rehear it and if we're challenging that the staff properly reviewed it and that in fact it's in non-compliance. Staff determined it was in compliance with the way our code is written based on its use as a restaurant. Part restaurant, part warehouse. So staff's obligation is to evaluate the application in light of the code that the council has approved. And if it meets the code, then the staff level approval is given. If it didn't meet the code, then there'd be a different outcome. So if we take a look at it, it's going to be, did the staff misinterpret our code?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just the, the standard that's in our code, it's 8682 when there's not appeal. But the city council finds that there may be significant adverse impact to the city as a result of the final decision, making the city affected or aggrieved by the final decision. So the standard is whether the council believes there may be a significant adverse impact to the city as a result of the decision. So that's right out of the.
Okay.
May I ask another question?
Sure.
So Ms. Veal, one other question. So the warehouse portion of it, is it, is it just to house like the distillery tanks and things like that? Or is it separate business warehouse? Because could you argue that, I guess to Reese's point, that if, if it's there to hold the distillery equipment, that it's actually part of the restaurant, so to speak, and all, all of that square footage should be deemed restaurant? That, I guess that's maybe another way to look at it, I guess.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor and council members, the warehouse portion is more functional in nature versus aesthetic. It is actually acting as their distillery warehouse production site. They will have trucks and some employees within there performing the work and duties of creating the the alcohol that is made there.
Right. So I guess the question would be, would that be? You know, when I go into Bardane now, like an eagle, they have all their distillery tanks. Is that part of the restaurant or is that separate use of square footage? Or is it part of the restaurant? I guess it would be a grayer.
Well, I'd argue that where they prepare the food and where they serve the foods, restaurant, the rest of it's something else.
So they prepare the, but so they prepare the alcohol, then does that mean that that's part of the restaurant?
Well, alcohol isn't, isn't exclusive to that location. Necessarily. Necessarily, some of these.
Okay, got it.
I, I, I just, I, I think Mr. Wadams brought the issue up. So we're talking in the context of parking.
Mr. Mayor?
If the standard's a significant adverse impact to the city and, and the council feels that this this project is, then then we have to have to vet that. Yes.
May I ask a question to city attorney Wadams?
Sure.
Mr. Wadams, I received communication from a constituent who has standing in this project pleading for a review from the consent agenda. I don't know if other people received this, and I feel that I should have a duty to disclose this because it's, you know, colored my, my opinion about this project. How, how do I go about bringing this into the discussion?
Well, Mayor, Council President Page, you bring up a good point because somebody could still appeal. I mean, this, this decision was made on the 18th. I think they have 15 days to appeal. So any, any one of your constituents could still appeal or was still within the time to appeal. So that's issue number one. Issue number two is if the council does want to take a look at this, this is a quasi-judicial application and that, and that just, you know, that, what was I going to say? Correspondence with your constituents would have to be disclosed on the record if the council wants to take a look. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
So council members, I am now disclosing that I had communication about this project with a constituent named Mr. Leap. Scott Leap.
I received an email from him as well, but I didn't respond. And Mr. Wadams.
Okay. The staff's made a decision. It's a final decision unless you want to exercise your authorities of council to effectively appeal the staff decision. In that proceeding, the staff would presumably defend the decision they made. And the council would be charged with affirming or denying or altering the staff decision with reasoned findings. That's the standard that we, that we imply now and so. So and
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, I'm sorry for the interruption.
No, go ahead.
For the point of, of talking through my rationale here, with, with respect, I believe that the city has arrived at the proper conclusion. Strictly applying ordinance as written, this is not a challenge of staff's analysis of that. And for that reason, I am now making a, a motion to approve that. And for clarification, this then will trigger an appeal process should this concerned citizen withstanding decide to do so. I do feel that the argument this citizen makes is best made by the citizen rather than the council. And it, it definitely influenced me and therefore I think that it, it's worthy of the full appeal process as driven by this person, should they choose to appeal.
Okay.
And with that, I, I would move to approve DSR FY 2023-0007 33100 West Chenden Boulevard.
And Mr. Mayor, sorry, Council President, I don't think that motion to approve is necessary. There's only a motion if you want to take it, because it's already approved.
Yeah.
Well, but it wasn't on the consent agenda and under the modification.
Okay.
I think if the intent of the motion is to affirm the decision that the staff made, then that's what we'd be doing.
That is my intent.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And members of the council, I, I'm excited about bringing Bardane into the city. I think it's fantastic. I, I particularly the, the energy, the quality, all are very, very attractive to me. And this is not, I, I have confidence that staff has done their job properly. I'm just very concerned that we are shoving a fairly, what I would anticipate, a a popular local restaurant that will draw fairly large crowds. And we're shoehorning it in with a little consideration to the true impact of parking.
Okay, further discussion? Mr. Mayor? Yes.
I, I agree. I, I, I'm wondering, and again, not out of any concern about staff's decision or the process you used in, in reaching that decision, the impact on adjacent businesses. Not, not just the absence of sufficient parking in, de facto, as opposed to what's in our, what's in our code for, for that location. But the impact that more than this number of spots are necessary to to make good use of that restaurant without imposing on the parking of other facilities in the area. But, but I don't know a way to address that. It, you know, that, that is a a suspicion that there's an adverse impact, but I couldn't argue persuasively, I think. a suspicion that there's an adverse impact, but I couldn't argue persuasively, I think, that it is an adverse impact. So, uh, I think, uh, proceeding with, um, uh, Council President Page's motion is, um, the right way to go.
Further discussion?
That's fair. I, I also agree. The other thing is, we went through and redid our own entire parking code, so that we have an objective standard.
Yeah.
And staff is following that objective standard.
Right.
And so we now set a precedent, every time we think that something is not gonna be right on our code that we just passed, that we made objective. You know, we're gonna have this type of thing every time a new development comes in and says, well, I'm not sure quite if that's what we wanted, and is that enough part? Well, we just went through our parking code to make an objective. It's based on square foot. And then Canada did a good job of deciding that, to your point, it's a subjective, maybe impact, maybe not. And so I, I would concur with, with Council President Page.
Any further discussion? Okay, the motion before is to, is to affirm the, uh, staff decision on DSR-FY 2023-7. Um, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
No.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Okay. Um, that concludes the business on our agenda this evening. I'm paying a motion to adjourn.
I still move.
A motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.